What time does the 5:30 meeting start?
Oh, 5:35 at least.
Okay. I will call to order the City Council work session Monday, May 6th. May I approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, as you say, a recent meeting, but it hasn't been that recent. But Council asked for a review and analysis of a couple of other sites for potential city hall and police stations. One is this site, what we're calling Gower East, because we already have plans for a one and a two-story down here in the front, so that would be Gower West. Gower East is behind us. And then the other location is the RV park. We found that the RV park has a portion that is out of the, all the way up to the large. It's not out of the extra-large or XXL, but it's out of the large, and so we reviewed that. In reviewing the RV park site, we met twice with, actually, no, once, so we had some phone calls after, with escape lobby to follow the potential impacts there, so we have some information on that also. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Pedersen from SRG, who's been performing the work.
Thank you. So what we're going to do first is go through the various different sites. We have three different options on the RV site, so what I want to do is kind of show you an overall site plan and talk specifics in more detail on a couple subsequent slides, and I'll do that for each of the three different options. So as Bruce mentioned, we're looking at the northwest corner of the RV park site currently. The RV park site does a loop that goes something like this, and then this actually also connects in to that particular RV site. So one of the things that we're looking at is how could we locate this facility while minimizing the number of RV sites that we would need to disturb or remove overall. This, currently, there are 100 RV sites on the premises, and this particular proposal shows 86 RV sites remaining, so that gives us 82 that were existing, and then four opportunities to create new sites, one of which you see here, a couple which you see here, and one which is just off the screen located over here. The price for the projects that I'm going to be showing you would include all of the modifications that would be needed to achieve what we're showing here on the RV park. This particular scheme is a one-story scheme. As Bruce had mentioned, that this particular site is above the extra-large and the extra, or it's above the large, it's not above the extra-large or the extra-extra-large. One of the things that's also unique about this site compared to the Gower Street site is it's outside of the Senate Bill 379 line, which has a significance in terms of what it's, we're legally required to do in terms of meeting that particular Senate bill. For the Gower Street site, we would actually need to go through a process where would we be talking to Dugami to get approval, which we did start previously in December. This particular scheme is the lowest cost. Actually, it's not just the lowest cost of the RV sites, it's the lowest overall cost of any of the sites that we've looked at. One of the things that we wanted to keep is an apples-to-apples comparison, and so we've been looking at the same kind of criteria, so we're still looking at 100-year building, we're still looking at a building that's highly sustainable. All of the things that we had talked about previously are incorporated in these schemes that you're going to be seeing. Specifically, we're also incorporating the idea of being able to have two ways in and out for police access. In talking with the RV developers, we talked about having a gate that would be located right here for the second way out, so that we don't inadvertently have an RV parking in our second way out. But the idea is this would be the primary egress and ingress from the site, but in the case of any type of incident that would be blocking that road, there would be the opportunity to pull out through the RV park and then out by the gas station. We also maintained the separate entrance that we've had for H-Rap, so H-Rap is located in this particular position and could have a separate entry right there. We also talked with the RV park specifically about the potential of shared programs, although we're not really showing a connection deliberately, there is some synergies in terms of some of the activities that H-Rap has, that they may be able to attract some of the campers, you know, their jewelry-making and some of their tours and taking people down to the beach. The one-story scheme, one of the reasons we wanted to show this one-story scheme was there are some operational efficiencies in terms of how the building is managed, and because the site is already above the large tsunami zone, it already has more protection for that ground floor level than some of the other schemes that we were talking about specific to this site. Now, the cons for this particular site, it is not protected during a extra-large or an extra-extra-large, and it's not as close to downtown. There is a physical connection, as most of you are sure aware, that you can essentially walk along the roadway that comes out along the street, I forgot the name of the street over here, but that would be a potential...
Seventh?
Sunset, thank you. Potential way for people to walk or bike to this particular site and obviously driving. We are maintaining the parking that's required by zoning, and we have recognized that this site would need to be rezoned, and we spoke with Jeff about several different options, and right now, we're maintaining the setbacks for the most restrictive option. So I'm going to zoom in. So similar to some of the other schemes that we've shown, we have an entrance lobby with council chambers directly adjacent to the lobby. We're maintaining the relationships of the Department of Finance and the Public Works to the building lobby with other offices such as the IT and the City Manager's Office being located further away from the overall main entrance. This shared area is areas such as the conference rooms, also includes a kitchen and toilet rooms. The police garage has access directly off of the parking lot, so police vehicles could pull immediately into the police garage with a separate entry for police and a separate entry also for H-Rap. They could potentially share the storage in that location. And then this also shows you a little bit more detail about the setback lines, which we're showing there. One of the things that we spoke with the RV park developers about was the idea about screening from the RV park, so we're proposing a berm be developed, not unlike what they're currently, but located a little further north, with a series of evergreen trees that would serve as the screen. This is an existing restroom facility that is part of the RV park, and so we're proposing a screen be located alongside that to screen it from the parking lot. And then similarly, we're proposing a screen along Haskell Lane to screen the building from the adjacent residential areas. This particular approach is showing a open space located adjacent to Eklund Road, and one of the things, there is a possibility, is if we don't need the setback in one of the different options, that potentially the building could move further west, which would allow for either one additional RV spot or more screening between them. So I'm going to ask if there are any questions on this option before I move on.
At least I have a question.
Sure.
Let me see, the site is outside the SB 379 line, therefore tsunami resistance is voluntary.
Yes.
Are you still opposing the cost that it's built as tsunami resistant, which to me means also earthquake resistant? I'm not sure.
So tsunami resistance is actually very different than earthquake resistance. This particular one-story scheme, when we get to the pricing, we're not showing it being tsunami resistant, because the water would be higher for the extra-large and the extra-extra-large, but we will be required to have all of the features in place from a structural perspective to make it earthquake resistant. So tsunami resistance from a height of the floodwater would not, this, this particular scheme, when we get to the cost, you'll see that that is not included.
I think, Ted, I believe this, I just my understanding, but Mike, this goes to your question, that if we were to build down here in front, there are special requirements from a foundation standpoint for stability and resistance that we wouldn't necessarily have here.
Has the soil been tested here? Is there liquefaction?
So we have a soils report from a geotech that was done in the late 1990s. We went ahead and had our geotechnical engineers and our structural engineers take a look at that particular information. I'm going to go back. The site borings, there was one about there, and there was one over here. Based on those site borings, they are not anticipating any liquefaction on this particular site. When we did do the costs, the actual recommendations that were in that 1990 report, or 19, late 1990s report, they were recommending some timber piles and things that we no longer would be considered state-of-the-art, so we've updated our recommendation in terms of the foundation, but the information on the soils was what we used to make those recommendations.
A lot of the old times, they said that whole area was filled with garbage, so they didn't find anything like that?
They did not, no. Again, it was too boring, so not extensive, and something we would definitely, before you build, you would want to do additional borings, but they did not find any, any need for liquef, or any concern about liquefaction in particular.
At least, our, to Mike's point, does the foundation that we're looking at now take care of the axial down to bedrock?
So I want to make sure, as we go through the options, that I address that specifically, because the different options, one of the reasons for the different cost is that we do have an option where we go ahead and go axial down to bedrock, which is 100 feet, based on that particular report. That this first option, we elected not to show it with that particular option because of it being a one-story scheme. Obviously, we could do the extended foundation even for a one-story scheme, you just wouldn't be protected from a water level perspective during those larger events. So the next option is Option B. It is a two-story scheme. It's located in approximately the same location. It's obviously a little bit lower footprint, has a very similar parking lot shape, and as a result, also has the same RV park spaces that were needed to be removed, which was essentially 14 less than what we currently have. Because of showing this particular option, one of the advantages of a second floor is that we're putting the essential functions, the police department and the emergency manager and the city council chambers, on the upper level. On the upper level, that level would be at level 65, which is above both the extra-large and the extra-extra-large, so from a flood level perspective, this option shows it high enough where you would be above those particular floodwaters. The primary difference between this option and the next option is the foundations in terms of the pricing. There's also some other differences in terms of the overall plan, but in this option, we're not showing the foundation that's going down the 100 feet to bedrock from a pricing perspective. I think all of the other pros and cons are pretty much the same as the previous scheme with the exception of that extra-large event. So this then shows you the overall floor plan, so this is the first floor, a very similar idea as the previous scheme, where you have the main entry lobby adjacent to the parking lot with the offices for both the finance as well as the public works department adjacent to the lobby. We're showing a separate police entry, which would then have an elevator that would take you to the second floor. Right now, we're showing it as an elevator which has two sides, one that would allow you to enter from here to go up to a second floor for the council chambers, and an entry off of this police entry for a secure elevator going up. Similar to the other scheme, we have the police garage off of the parking lot, and then H-Rap similarly also has a entrance off of the parking lot and is located in a similar position. And then the second floor for this option, you see the police department adjacent with a secure entry in this way. The council chambers would have an elevator access here or stair access through the upper lobby, and then we've also located the emergency manager office, and there's actually some space for some additional offices in addition to that on the second floor.
Where would the command center be, in the council chambers?
The idea is that we would be setting up in the council chambers in an event, yes.
How high is the second floor?
So this, the overall floor-to-floor is 16 feet, so we would be at level 68, and level 65 is what they're calling the extra-extra-large line in terms of what the anticipated water height is.
I was wondering about whether things kind of got destroyed, how far would you have to get down to get out, which you're saying is about 16 feet.
Yeah.
There would be concrete stairs in there?
Yeah, but if they weren't there anymore? And if that second story was, I was just curious.
So the last scheme, the primary difference for this scheme in terms of the pricing is the tsunami-resistant foundation, which includes the 100-foot piers that go down to the bedrock, as well as some additional foundation work that's intended to direct the water as it's coming from Ibole Creek, so there's additional informa, or additional piers that would be within the foundation that we would be locating primarily, excuse me, in this park area. Here would be where we would be looking at locating those additional piers that would be intended to sort of break the water flow and sort of direct it around the building. So again, this particular scheme, the second floor is above the high water line and has additional, I'd say, con in that because of the way that we've configured the building, it would, we would need to relocate the restrooms, so... I'm sorry. There's, meant to push the button to show you where the restroom is, so we've relocated it, because it was right here, but it's, we still have the second way out. Now, when we elongate the building, we actually lost an additional RV stall in this particular configuration. So the overall floor plan, this one is slightly different than the other two in terms of the parking lot is now elongated, but it still has a similar concept where we have a berm that's protecting it from a visual access from the existing RV park with both a tree screen and this berm. We still are maintaining the tree screen from Haskell Lane. In this particular case, the lobby, you have finance and public works on opposite sides of the lobby with the shared areas, the conference rooms, the kitchens along the north side of the building. H-Rap, again, could have its own separate entry, and then the police garage similarly would have its own separate entry with potential to have access up to the second floor. And so then the second floor, very similar idea as the previous scheme, where the police occupy a portion of the building with an elevator that has a direct access into the police and a separate way into the council chambers with the emergency manager's office and some shared toilets located on the second floor. Any questions regarding the RV schemes before I move on?
I'm kind of curious, the Option B is closer to the west, and this one, you moved the whole thing eastward on Option C. Just curious, could Option C be scooted more westerly?
So Option C definitely could be located, so what you're talking about is we're showing a little bit of distance, additional distance here. It doesn't allow us to get back significant, but potentially, if this can be reduced, depending on which option, then I think we could gain back some additional spots. So then on Gower Street, we also looked at a two-story scheme. In this particular two-story scheme, we're looking at, would it be possible to build a two-story scheme while the existing building, which is shown with this dashed line, remains operational during the construction? We are anticipating that the police garage that currently exists would need to be relocated and rebuilt during a second phase of the construction. So anticipated right now is two phases of construction, the main building and then in a separate phase, the police garage after that's completed and this has been able to be torn down. We are showing essentially a parking lot here with 32 spots. Zoning requires that this particular project have at least 43 spots, so we would need to have 11 spots in this existing lot dedicated to the new facility. But right now, what we're showing in the lower parking lot is what you currently have in the lower parking lot. Obviously, one of the pros of this particular scheme compared to the RV site is it's much closer to the center of town compared to the previous Gower Street sites. This portion of the site is six feet higher than the south portion of the site, and so it has some additional advantages in terms of where it, the water level and the intersection of the water level. Compared to the RV sites, this is a higher-cost scheme. One of the reasons is because of the foundations and the need to go down to bedrock on, essentially, this particular site and this particular scheme. However, I should note that also on this scheme, the second floor is only above the medium tsunami, so if you were in a large tsunami event, the water level would be higher than the second floor level of this particular scheme. So zooming in on the building, we would look at a shared entry lobby with, again, the finance and public works being located close to the entry lobby. H-Rap, we're imagining there could be a potential for a separate entry off of Grover there, and then there could be the same idea as we were talking about with the two-sided elevator, an elevator that you would go up to, to the police department, that would have its own separate entrance off of this way, and an elevator that has its separate entry into the upper lobby that would allow you to access the council chambers and the emergency office as well as the shared conference room slash toilet rooms. Any questions on this particular scheme?
Well, Lisa, does the exemption or the need to talk with Dugami about the SB 379 bill, says for this?
So we, in this particular site, we are not below the Senate Bill 379 line, meaning we do need to have consultation with Dugami. That was something that we started in the past process and had started the conversation in terms of what we would need to, to do to make sure that this is a safe site from their perspective as well. Whereas the RV site, because it's above the Senate Bill 379 line, we are not required to consult with Dugami.
Thank you.
When you, when you started discussing this with Dugami, what was their reaction? Does it seem like this is going to be a problem going through with them, or?
So basically, none of what has been proposed has ever been proposed anywhere else, and so in terms of being able to get a reading, absolutely yes or no, they were not able to do that. We would need to go through the entire consultation process in order for that to, ruling to be finalized.
And would this also be 16 feet on each floor?
Yes, we're still recommending the 16 feet floor-to-floor, so this site is at elevation 36, so that would put the second floor at elevation 52, so below the...
Are commercial properties allowed to be more than 30 feet high?
They're not. I think it's only allowed at 30.
Well, 28 for residential, commercial's 30, I think.
It's a little higher.
Yeah. But not, but this is 32 feet, so I just thought...
But this is a commercial, isn't it? Isn't it institutional?
It's different than residential.
Yeah, but isn't it institutional?
But we are doing really good residential and non-residential. Both families, non-residential, it's not institutional at all.
One of the things we talked about very beginning of the project is that we may need to ask some questions of the council as to whether or not they're willing to make some exceptions for a 100-year building for public benefit, and that would be your call in going through whatever processes we have to go through. There's also things that we've uncovered, present the RV park, there's a whole zoning change, all these things have to occur for that location, so kind of we're saying, these are the possibilities of where we could go, and then we go to work after we've decided on one, then we go to work.
I'm also questioning, you said 16 feet from floor to floor?
Have to be.
That's really excessive.
Yeah.
I don't understand that one, so that's one thing.
I think what you're looking at is even in this building, I probably will, well, ran it probably 14, 16 feet here to the next deck.
It basically is looking at the, you know, what is the depth of the beams, what are the depth of the ductwork, subtracting all that. Can your design do better? Absolutely. We're trying to, again, show you something that we know is absolutely buildable and something that we're covering the costs for.
For example, a room of this size wants to be taller than an office.
Yes.
And so you kind of work around those.
I understand that, but even, that 16 is kind of excessive, yeah.
I mentioned that space above us is 16, but the area that we have, we have...
Okay, no, that's just a detail, that's just a detail, I can do at this point.
So would this site require rezoning?
No, not this Gower Street site, no.
Have the other issues with Dugami?
Yes. So I can move on to costs of people? So we looked at similar approach to other options that we've shown you, where we've broken it down, each site by direct construction cost, soft costs, which are the costs for your architectural fees, your fees from a building permitting, your engineering costs, your cost to look at the site, and then in this particular case, we have no other costs. The other sites that we've looked at sometimes had some other costs, costs associated with the Southwind site, for example, where we had highway costs, and then we're looking at total project cost. So RV Option 1, which again was the one-story, non-tsunami-resistant foundation, this particular cost, 9.6 million of direct construction, includes the parking lot and the RV changes, comes out to $650 per square foot, and then when we add the soft costs, we come out with a total project cost of 13.8 million. Looking at RV Option B, the difference is, again, there's a slightly larger building because of the need to add two sets of stairs and the elevators, and then we also have toilet rooms on both floors, which take up a little bit of extra room, so that adds a little bit to the additional direct construction cost, which then you can see the direct construction cost per square foot is very close, because even though there's higher direct construction... there's higher direct construction dollars, there's actually more square footage associated with that. Soft costs similarly go up, because some of the fees that we're calculating are based on dollars for direct construction, giving us an overall total project cost of fourteen-point-two million dollars. This is a non-tsunami-resistant foundation, but the second floor of the building is above the extra, extra-large tsunami line. Option C shows the two-story tsunami-resistant foundation. Again, very similar size because of this two-story option. We're looking at a direct construction cost of eleven-point-five million, which adds about twenty-five dollars per square foot overall, so it gives you a sense of what that foundation is adding in terms of overall cost. The soft costs, again, some of which are based on the direct construction, so you see an increase in soft costs for a total project cost of sixteen-point-one million I want to pause for questions, or I can move on to the Gower Street sites.
If you were to build it to be twenty-eight to thirty feet, would that make a difference in the cost?
It would make a slight difference in the cost, but it would be not significant in terms of the overall, because you still have the same floor area, you still have the same things that you're building, you still have floors, you still have ceilings. There's a swath of the exterior skin that would be removed if we were doing that later, but it wouldn't be significant, in my opinion, you know. I don't even think it'd be a hundred thousand dollars. So then, the Gower Street sites, we went ahead and showed the two previous options so that you could see a comparison. So this is the option that we just presented, which we're calling Gower Street East. It's a two-story tsunami-resistant foundation, similar size as our RV site in terms of the overall area. This price includes the site work and the parking lot, but it does not include redoing the parking lot that's adjacent out here to the west. We also noted a second-floor level of fifty feet, which is above the large tsunami line, but just barely. That leads us to about that six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per square foot, very similar soft cost increase, leading us to a fifteen-point-seven total project cost. And just so you can compare, the two options that we were looking at for Gower Street West, we had early on a one-story option, which, very similar to the RV, is less expensive because we were looking at a non-tsunami-resistant building. This was assuming that we would go the appeal route, not essentially build to the tsunami-resistant. This particular option, option B, was showing a two-story option, which did have a tsunami-resistant foundation. And what you can see is there's slightly less overall project cost in the east side, and that has to do with the soils that we anticipated on the western portion of the site, which I think subsequently we found there were some pretty major reasons to be concerned back there.
Lisa, the two-story, the top one?
Yeah.
The same four, it's fifty feet above. Yeah, Gower Street option B, the bottom one.
You know what, this is a...
I think those are reversed, right?
They are reversed, yes, they are. This is correct, that this is above the large and this is above the medium, but this is fifty and this is fifty-six.
On the information that Lisa's prepared, I'm ready to discuss the financial impacts of building a RV site. Interested in that?
Okay.
Bruce, I want to thank the state of Lodi, they've been very easy to work with on this. They went through, and I guess based on the number of sixteen or whatever that they were down, they looked at how many times they had more than eighty-five percent occupancy, and then they assumed that that would be lost revenue. And with that, they estimated that it would be something under a hundred thousand dollars a year. I think that we can do better than that, because if we're actually doing a design for the location, we can, you know, figure out restructuring some of the locations and things. We really didn't get into that that much, but let's use a hundred thousand dollars, which is higher than what their estimate was. If you look at the nineteen-twenty projected revenues, that's one-point-nine-seventy-seven million. So if we were to take off a hundred thousand dollars, that's about a five-point-three percent loss in revenue. From a budget standpoint, there's ways that we can cover it. There's a twenty percent contingency in the budget now of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand. If we went to a fifteen percent contingency, it would be two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. And then, it's not actually going to be, I mean, we'd be able to go ahead and cover that, and I think that the fund balance is over five-hundred thousand dollars. So it is a, the bottom line is it's a five percent reduction, but it doesn't seem to be one that is insurmountable. There is no benefit on the other side, because it's slightly smaller, that maybe their expenses go down. It really doesn't, there'll be some utilities that'll go down, but as far as maintenance on the major amenities and the number of people that they need to keep the soil clean, pump gas, all that, they're not going to have a significant reduction as a result of the number of units going in. Any questions in that?
Not really a question, it just seems, you know, if you're losing ten percent of your commodity, you're only losing five-point-three percent of your income. I did quite some, right?
Well, because you only lose income on a day that you have more than eighty-five percent occupancy.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Interesting.
And I think that, again, I think that we can get to better than eighty-four or eighty-five minutes. As a matter of fact, we may be adding three, because Lisa found three locations that they could potentially have now with their current configuration.
Okay.
How many days is it less than eighty-five percent occupancy?
I can find out, I don't have any...
I don't think you have any.
No, no, this is just budget information.
Bruce, currently, how many RV spots are there?
A hundred?
Hundred.
If there's a hundred, we can go down maybe six. And I don't know, I'd have to go back and ask, I don't know if they factored it with the additional three. I don't, I think, I don't know if they just went back and looked at how many times they were over eighty-five percent occupancy. I need to find out, it's, it's going to be in that range.
Okay, I guess we're at a point where we've gotten all kinds of information. I don't know if you want to discuss details, or if you got any more questions for Lisa. Now's the chance. The concepts for RV site fit, I would tweak them. That's just me. But that means, right now, the whole idea of a building and parking in that corner does work. Whether it could work better, lesser, more so, that's us looking at it in detail.
It's not a design, it's not...
Yeah. I lean towards not having to move the bathrooms if we don't have to, because that would be a...
Right.
plumbing and all that kind of stuff.
Right, and that's, I mean, we, one of the things we wanted to show you was a range, and I think there was, before we met with the RV developers, we were concerned that they might have some concerns about having the restroom that close to the facility. They did not. They were mostly actually more concerned from screening from the city's perspective than from their perspective.
And also, the cost for replacing restrooms is included in the price that you have for the scenarios where it has to be replaced.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not another cost, it won't be nothing?
Right.
I think with the incremental cost of buying a more secure site, off the head, it looks like it's probably worth it. We're going to go to all this effort and build an emergency center and the city hall, if we added incremental cost to go to the extra-large or, you know, both the large and extra-large. Makes sense to...
You mean to go to the two, to go to the two-story?
To go to the two.
Has there been any consideration about building, that building where the RV offices are now and then moving the RV offices?
They were definitely not interested in that. They like the layout where everybody has to drive by them to get there. They have the pool and everything there where they can keep an eye on it, fuel tanks, all those sorts of things. Plus, it is lower, I don't know about how much, but there's like an island, when you look at the beyond large, like the extra-large and large, I'm sorry, extra-large and XXL, it's that north end that meets that criteria, not the whole site. But they were, they actually had concerns when it was proposed to put the tiny houses. They just felt that that was, you know, incompatible with, I mean, in that location right up front, that that was incompatible with what they were trying to achieve.
The fact that the higher ground is on that north end concerns me a little bit for it being an emergency center, just because, you know, in a harsher condition, that becomes an island, which doesn't mean it's not accessible, it just means it's, for a short time, a problem.
Doesn't that mean everything else is underwater?
Well...
Scenario you're talking about?
No, I mean, it is, it's, yeah. I mean, up to, if it gets up to the, you know, the door sills of this building on the ground level, that means the intersection's probably all washed out, and the bridges are gone, so you've got a, an island. It's accessible from the east, which is really nice, I have to agree. That's, that's much better than this location. Of course, a lot of spots are better than this location. I'm just, I have, I'm trying to figure out the balance between option A, a single-story, reasonable building, kind of a residential feel, compared to a full-on emergency aspect, that extra million dollars to do the second-story building, I would almost say, would that be better put in a second building somewhere else that is definitely safe and secure? That'd be my want to discuss. I'm not saying that's the idea right now, because I'm still hashing it over, but...
My biggest concern is that site, I personally think it's better than this. I always kind of favor it being on this side, in the gravel park, on the east, but this is not, this is not a good location, you know, I shouldn't have to get it. But my concern with the RV park is it's remote, it's from the center of town. It's on the other side of 101, which helps create that island if there is an emergency to happen. They have not vehicles, I'll ask if you're, the people that need to get to the emergency management center, we had the recovery to be able to get there. And most of the work will be on this side, not on the other side. So again, just that being on the other side of 101, I think is a big negative. How big, you know, is it going to happen? Those are all risks you have to try to assess. And I can bring this up, the other site that the city owns is the same elevation, forty-four, forty-five feet, it's right down the street on Spruce. And we've not given anybody an opportunity to voice an opinion on that, or if we're going to take this to the public. I think they're remiss in not at least saying here are all the sites, here, the same level of studies, here's the cost, here's the pros and cons, and not to look at all the sites that we have available. Take a look at Southland, this site down in the parking lot, the Arvin Park, and, you know, one site we've not looked at is average about forty-five feet, and it's just down the street and in the center of town, meets the other objectives. So I guess I'm not comfortable in saying to the public, we looked at everything, here's my representation, when in fact we had not looked at it. And I know there are issues, but again, it actually has only changed, but it has the same advantage that Spruce Street site has the same advantages that the RV park has, plus the additional advantages and no additional, well, it's got a negative, and that's just the perception that it's, you know, open, open space and a city forest. So we are committed, and I know, I'm not going to get a consensus out of the council, to take a look at it, the council has to be prepared to say, yeah, there's one more site that's forty-five feet, that we would do this in town, this side of the highway, but we've chosen to ignore it. I just don't think we should ignore it.
I don't think we've chosen to ignore it, I think we've discussed it several times.
Well, the discussion was open to my dead body, it's up there.
Yeah.
Well, that's not a discussion, Sam. We decided, Jan, be at Park Lake Center, make that Spruce Road available and open up to people can actually enjoy it, benefit from it, and to be done very sensitively. And we've not had a chance to take a look at that. And if somebody's proposing one there and clearcut that area, I mean, that'd be ridiculous. I see, Jan, you're shaking your head, damn it.
Hey, I have a right to choose my land.
You can speed, you can speed.
Excuse me, we worked really hard to preserve that land.
Jan, if you're very inclined to do this all day long, I guess...
Excuse me, excuse me, I have feelings about that land, and I have a right to have those feelings.
Jan.
I'm not saying a word when I'm sitting here, I have to do something when I feel like you're disrespecting the work of all of us who've come before, or maybe you came here. It's just disrespectful, in my, in my view.
Okay, Jan.
I won't argue with you, but when that was agreed to, nobody was aware of the seriousness of a cascade event and the severity of tsunamis that could hit this town. Nobody even talked about it back then.
That land is not very high. I've looked at this map, that land is not in the away-from-the-hazard, that's not away-from-the-hazard zone.
Jan, sorry.
We had that at one point in there, and then it was changed, just like the Canobie Community Church. They used to think that was high enough to be a center, and then, when the next reports came out, they took it away. So that land is, if you're really trying to get away from a tsunami, that land is not that high.
Jan, please.
It's right around the map.
Jan, both of you, I'm going to, I'm going to stop both of you right now, I'm sorry. Interaction like this, it's just not kosher. We can have a comment thing afterwards if we need to. We have looked at that site as an emergency site, as a tsunami site, twice before. We have looked at that site as an emergency site, as a tsunami site, twice before. And I was on planning commission once and council once when we did this. So, um, Jan is correct, the, the line has changed, um, twice, I think. Um, but still, uh, we were, we were considering City Hall up on that site at one point. So it has been looked at before. Not to say that we, you know, didn't decide something else, and it was a dramatically different type of way of looking at it. It was for a evacuation tower, um, which is now happening all over the place except here. Anyhow, um.
Just a minute, if I can just.
Sure, Bruce, go ahead.
Establishing the plan, just, I only need to say that, in understanding the situation of what's going before through the decisions, that if the location in City Hall is, um, a major consideration, is emergency management, then that site is superior to the other sites, given the height, has to be checked. And Jan, when I think that the last time, it was reviewed, yes, it was, last time it was reviewed, Jeff, didn't it come out the same height? It actually got higher, didn't it?
I don't know.
Yeah, but really, these were the two sites, but, but if, and if it's not, it's not. But the discussions I had with Jeff was with that site and the one at the RV park. This one would, because most of the people, if you look at a map or an aerial, um, just ones hanging up in the hollow here, by far, the majority, probably half the population is within walking distance of that particular site. So, Jan, that's, um, kind of impolite, but, um, if you look at the population, you can see where the houses are and where that particular location is. It also won't have, um, when you're talking about debris fields and those kind of things, anything people are gonna have to walk over, the closer, the better off you're gonna be. The other thing is, you know, 'cause I drive by it all the time when I go to, um, go home, I go over to Sunset, is that, um, the, the way it crosses, you know, under, I'm not sure if that's not gonna be a lake for a little while. You know, I don't know where that's gonna drain once they place those up with water. So, as far as the, um, the simplest, I mean, we're gonna be in a primitive situation, and so it's gonna be walking. And so, um, that site is, uh, a better site than the RV park in, in terms of that. Beyond that, the RV park is pretty much equal. But as far as, when you have the conditions, if you're walking, you're walking to debris, everything else, that site is closer, so it's superior in terms of that. All other considerations about current use, all those kind of things is different. Just saying, if you're just looking at the site, that location is the best location for the city hall.
I, I would disagree, um, with the term superior. Because the, uh, granted, I, I believe that the Spruce Street, uh, site is the same height as the RV park site. Uh, it's the same type of ground. There is some wetlands in there that we would have to be careful of. Um, that being, as far as the emergency management of it, my thinking is that the RV park is a better choice because of its connection to the east through Elk Creek Road, which might be our only connection, uh, for a short time till the bridges are rebuilt. That being also the fact that, yeah, it's nice and closer to evacuation, um, that I do agree with, but again, you're in a place that's gonna be relatively stranded for a short period of time until we can clear that debris and make access to a building that is, again, the way our, our, uh, terrain is set up, um, we've got this weird peninsula that just kind of juts along the south side of the Elk Creek Basin. That was, is, uh, that riff that you see in the map that was in the, the other room. It's really distinct. Uh, and there's a plateau that just runs along that south side of, and that's that, um, that's that high ground. But again, the farther you get out on that peninsula, the harder it's gonna be to get to in an emergency. For, like Frank was saying, for the, uh, emergency personnel to staff a building that's out on a, out in the middle of the debris. I don't know, that one, that, I think balances between the two. If you're gonna say one's better or the other's better from an emergency sense, I think the RV park is better. Just because, yes, it is also kind of gonna be stranded, but it's closer to, um, Public Works Yard and Elk Creek Road. Which if we're gonna get help from, it's gonna be coming from that direction. So, I guess that's my take on just the emergency aspect of it. I'm, I'm committed to the fact that we reserved that property. So that's gonna be a big hurdle for me.
I guess that is the, or a, a City Hall be out on the perimeter. Down one way, I don't know, like the bidding street, rather than being in the center of town. Accessible, all over the town, easily accessible, easily walkable, even the trail's gone to it. And that same point, Spruce Street, it's the same that fits with our current location here. As a central point for city functions, which go on every day for years and years. I think there's some value to wait that against a disaster that, that is gonna come, whether it'll be tomorrow or a hundred years from now. So, that's a consideration we started off with. We wanted to look at one of the criteria that was important to us, was being in the center of town, accessible on daily leases, worth it.
And I think that's an argument for keeping this spot. I think the Gower Street has the best, the best location and the best zoning and the best, uh, accessibility. But again, it's the worst for emergency preparedness. If we could figure out a way to lessen the cost of rebuilding here, so that we could then reserve costs for an emergency center elsewhere, that would be my preference.
If you were going to put an emergency center elsewhere, where would you, where would you put that?
Well, that, that depends on how we're, how we're gonna, what we're gonna move and what we're gonna do. If, if it was the police station, maybe the police station would be best at the RV park. And that was one of the options I put forward, is maintain City Hall here, put the police station over the RV park. There you've got kind of a fairly decent separation of, uh, the uses that are preferable in the spaces that we have. We still are considering, we still have the, uh, Southwind site for an emergency, uh, cash site up, up on the hill. Once we've talked about it ever since Stacy first had the design of a glimp hangar down there. Uh, we still have that. That would not require all the access and utilities that a full City Hall would need down at Southwind. So you still have that capability. It's a little remote, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say. But, you know, you got the RV park. I don't know, I think that also then breaks down, um, the costs separately, which is gonna be more expensive. I understand that.
Yeah, I think, we sometimes have suggested that we just put emergency management, emergency control center at Southwind. I think we were talking about it, but it's not as high up the hill, but, uh, track where the entry is, the helicopter pad or what, and there's the buildings. It's still a possibility to put an emergency center there with some mission, uh, Public Works equipment there and communications there. And then place a City Hall here, and just consider disposable, uh, another option. Which, I don't know that for an emergency center, we still need a hundred big columns to support it, if it wasn't nearly as large. And there may be a way to, with a lesser massive building, probably a completely less massive foundation. Perhaps with, uh, less, the case on it, the more earthquake, so there's still to, to support that. And, but build a City Hall out here where it is. And that is something we haven't looked at, is there's so many different variations. We tried to pin it down and say, well, let's at least look at the RV site, the, the, uh, site over here on the east, uh, side of this building. And I think that's a good comparison. That's another compromise, and maybe use the City Hall as a center of town. An emergency center, emergency management, out in a tsunami secure zone. Costs more, building two facilities. And then you start getting into the details as well, we need to have a space, not just a cash site. It's not just a office and communication tower. Or we need a workplace, build a much bigger facility that sits there empty for our lifetimes to come. And that's, what we can try to do is get a good space that is dual, dual purpose.
Chris?
I would, um, ask that whatever we decide on, that the facilities don't get separated. Because we have like fifteen people, twenty people are gonna be doing everything. And if their offices are here, and they're taking their laptops and they're going out someplace else, it would be much more efficient if we were at the RV park or someplace where everybody's together. It would cost less to do that, and then we could support each other. But I don't, I think that the cost to build, for example, the cost to build here and then the cost to put something up there, where are we putting all the money out there from? It would be less efficient and more expensive. So I would, um, ask that to the degree possible, we keep operations together. Problem?
Well, I, I think that, that makes sense, and that's why we kind of discarded that a couple months ago, I think. But when we talk. Round and round this tend to, we're looking toward the RV park.
When we talk about some of the things that have to happen, I mean, imagine right after a tsunami, trying to get a quorum to go ahead and declare the disaster. And then we've got people coming in from, you know, all over the place to work and things like that, but. One of the meetings we had this morning, like, how can we do this with the mayor can declare, or the management can declare, or the president can declare? Rather than saying it was not a disaster until we get three of you in room, and, you know, and where does it go? So there's a lot of logistics that need to go on, that if we can all be in place, um, if you don't have, um, you know, multiple locations where you're trying to set up communications, uh, a lot of the information, like clear at the RV park, just follow the information we would need, we would need to the point of getting ready to rebuild would be there if, uh, if we were to set it up. But if we were to, say, build a City Hall here, and then consider it disposable, and then have everything, we'll try to go ahead and recreate Cannon Beach from a police station. We'll do anything you want, but I'm just, you know, I'm saying that my recommendation, an efficiency standpoint, and best service for everybody, you know, immediate after and, um, well after disaster, is for all of us to be in the building that still exists, where we can be operating as normally as possible.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I mean, efficiencies are, you know, really important. But if we can't, if we can't satisfy the two primary problems of emergency safety and a downtown access location that's comfortable for normal everyday operations, you kind of run into, okay, which is the most important? Efficiencies or somebody's, um, sense of which one is better? The emergency aspect or the downtown, uh, everyday operations? That's where we, that's where we're at, and that's why we keep having these different sites, and not any one site is just perfect. So. I guess the only other option would be to start looking for land to purchase, that we could do that, but that's, I know it's not there. 'Cause I've done never other things.
What we have with that, there's really not, there, there's, um, sites that are further south, like down towards Toluana, but it would be buying a group of private, privately owned properties, and we would actually be rewarded from the population side. And I don't know, I mean, not with the, with the relative elevations of those properties, no. But, um, there's not a lot of people privately owning land that we're able to identify. And some of it is on the east side, and so you're back in the spotlight.
Yeah.
So people would be facing the same situations we are.
Like up, up on the escrow, you know, we're talking about, on that.
Yeah, I think kind of, yes.
So the State Park is up there.
Yeah, yeah, the State Park area.
Always.
I guess I would like to get back to another one of my concepts would be to, if we were to focus at the RV park, for a full-on operations, daily operations of the, uh, whether it's two-story or the one-story, whichever, that opens up this place, um, for other concepts, and, uh, the old building is probably not worth saving, but you never know, after you've poked around at it, it's empty. The idea of maintaining some sort of city presence here, either with a new building or just here in the old building, for those, um, occasional meetings that we would have, that would have large bodies of people and, and or, um, events or something like that. That's just, I'm trying to figure out what to do with this place. Um, the other idea that I had maybe was to reduce, um, the RV part, build the City Hall down there, and maintain this for H-Wrap. 'Cause it has a business front almost, and they could, you know, you could expand upon it for that kind of, you know, you'd have garages and you'd have stuff, places to store more of the vehicles and things like that. Just another idea to throw into the mix that might make the RV park a little better suited. At this point, I, uh, promised Jan a chance to speak for public if you wish to say anything else.
I think I'm sad about that.
Okay.
I just, I just wish that people could realize that taking care of the natural environment is extremely important, and we often live that short trip. And our town, this community, has always been known for being on the forefront of environmental protection. And I would really like to see us keep going in that direction. We can find other ways to deal with what we need to do. We really are a creative community, and I think if we just stick at it, we will find a way. We also need to respect the environmental treasures that we have here. And we really try and work to do that, and I guess that's why I get so upset, is because I see people that haven't lived here for a long time, just acting like it's not a big deal. And I see how people come here from other communities, and just, they cannot believe how we have this beautiful place to, to bird and to hike and to, you know, just be quiet and be with these old trees. And we have the forest, the, the, the whole creek forest reserve. I meet people there that they cannot believe that our city was so, just had so much foresight to buy that land. So, I feel like as time goes on, we, if we do keep protecting these places, it'll be better for everybody. And I hope we can just hang on and keep trying to find a ways, a solution for the City Hall and for the emergency preparedness place. But please, let's not just, just not respect what was put before as far as the environmental protection. This is why people love to visit here, because other cities have let go of their trees. They've let go of the beautiful places, and they come here because we, that's why they want to be here. And that's part of our community. It's an important part of our community.
Thanks. Thanks, Jan. Thanks, Jan. Okay.
I have another question. Has anybody given thought to the, I guess maybe I have asked this before, and the area was too small, taking a look at that lot that, where the school and Tolavana Hall is, and maybe switching the school and Tolavana Hall to this building and building a city hall at that side? I guess we talked about that.
I think it was considered, you know, I found out the numbers, I thought it was considerably too small. We can, we can double check it, but there's really not a lot of property there. You've got two small buildings, and you've got all the parking times that would be associated, we've got some kind of meetings and stuff. So, no, there's, if you want to acquire the property, you know, there's, there's been other things that we have, and are we looking to consider setting that up?
I think there was a fix, it was too small.
Yeah. There was a, somebody tossed out the idea of this, this building being used for the school, and I think because it's below the inundation line, that becomes a big challenge. So, okay. Last comment? Okay. Anything for good of the order?
Representative Tiffany Mitchell has an open house this weekend, Saturday, ten a.m. down at the Pine Grove Community Center, and I was thinking about that in a relationship to Senate Bill thirty-one, thirty-four, if anybody wanted to.
That would be good.
Voice their opinion about that, that would be a good forum to do that.
What time is that?
Uh, ten a.m.
What day?
Uh, Pine Grove Community Center, in Manzanita, yes.
What day?
Uh, the eleventh.
One thing I'd say. Um, there are probably unlimited options that we can look at in terms of decentralizing and all these other things. If we're looking, kind of, just keeping everything together, trying to keep it viable after an event, those kind of things, unless there's like a really weird thing, idea of something none of us have thought, we can make the RV park, if we're not big enough. And Jan, I totally get what you're saying about these Brew Street, and if that's not going to be a site, same, just if there was no trees or whatever, the location probably is the best. The fact that there's the, the preserve is there, that complicates it for sure. So if we're not going to go there, then it's fine. I'm saying that with the other sites, that we're talking about, the one that makes the most sense, unless there's something comes out of the, out of the blue, you've got a lower cost option than any other location, you've got the ability to consolidate everything up there, we're talking about getting out of the, out of the way of most of the, most likely events. And so with that, until we come up with something better, I would suggest that we, you know, do consider that as something that might be developed in order to move forward. And there's nothing, it's not perfect, but it's, it's pretty darn good, and like, way better than here, so. Just, just.
Are you suggesting a particular option, I missed that?
I would, I would suggest, again, cost is a factor. And so if we can build a, for three million dollars less there, out of the tsunami zone, then we can build for sixty million dollars here, then that makes a lot of sense. I don't know if the additional million is, is worth it to go to the XXL. Maybe it is, that's up to you, but to me, you have a site that can work, and it's not going to destroy the operation of the RV park. And you can get, you know, a considerable savings, or you can go to the two-story, which I've always had trouble with the two-story, because the operation didn't work for me. But I think that there is a solution. So that's, I would, I would probably recommend the one-story, and if that's something that you all can live with, I think from a staff standpoint, it accomplishes most of what I think we need to accomplish for the city.
So you're, you're suggesting the one-story non-sunami resistant foundation?
The non-sunami resistant is, well, is it, for the one-story, it wouldn't have a tsunami foundation, would it?
No. And the current cost, you, you obviously could do that.
Right, yes. Yeah. I guess, you know, we, we talked right, you know, for a very long time about buying down risk, and I think that, for example, for, to buy down the risk to go from this site to out of the XXL was dumb. And so that one, you know, I had some trouble with that math. But if we can buy, buy down the risk, get, get above the large, and so you're talking about most of the events are going to be less than that, and actually have a lower cost in here, it kind of addresses some of the concerns that we've had about cost. And I think that, based on the, the approach that SRG has taken and that they've been given, we're being very conservative in the costs, and so I have no doubt that it'll come in less, we just want to make sure we don't come over. And so when you start whirling down those contingencies, that you get into different levels of design, that kind of thing, I think that you're going to find that, you know, we will be able to beat those costs. So I think that, starting out from where we were, to be able to get a city hall in a location that goes all the way out of the large, I don't know how much velocity, et cetera, like, if we were to have an extra-large, I don't think by the time the water gets there, it's going to be moving terribly fast, it's just going to go up and then back down. But I, I think that that can work. And so, again, we can continue to look at any options if we want to, but do we have a keeper? I think, I think that we have a keeper, Mike.
Well, I like the one-story layout better than the thing. Because there's some efficiency that I see, cost-saving, not having to double up on restaurants.
Yeah.
Putting elevators, and then you have to build stairs in addition to the elevators, which probably won't work.
It does, it fits, it fits, it fits the site, and it fits the neighborhood, two at once.
The, despite the kind of feel about being closer to town, if the consensus of the council was, we could support the RV side, I would support option A. Not my favorite, looking at compromise, and that would be one that I could support. And I think there's some arguments and rationale for doing that, like the least of which the cost, what's happened said, at least having maybe access from the east, which may be very valuable at some point, and being near the public brunch yard, which is looking. That's one. I, I feel like we shouldn't leave here without giving a lease and a view in some, some direction. Just walk away, there are options. None of us are, certainly I'm not my favorite option, but I don't think that we'll get a consensus there, and besides, you're looking for the best, and so are looking for where they're achieving.
I think we also need to remember that what we're putting forward is the, the choice for the bond. So, again, our, we're not the ones making the final decision.
No.
It's the voters who are going to pay for this thing. But if this is the one that we wanted to step forward and say, okay, this is the one we'd like to ask for, I agree with Mike. I have a whole bunch of preferable ideas, but this one does seem to be a compromise. I totally agree on the one-story for that site, for the residential feel of it. And I think that corner of the RV park property can be, it can be jammed in there, so.
Nestle, I prefer the Nestle.
With a, with some tweaking and some, and looking at it closer and getting some details. Anybody else?
I just have a quick question about the option C.
Yeah.
And kind of what was driving that, that concept?
So.
Can you turn, can you turn the light on? I don't know if it's up or not.
So. So, option C was, actually, what was driving that was a, kind of an idea about a very simple rectilinear building that could, we thought initially might more efficiently fit on the site. Once we started to lay it out, we realized that we were taking out the existing restroom, and so that actually led us to ask ourselves, was there some, maybe different building configuration that would allow us to keep the existing restroom? So, in a way, this was where we started, because it's just a simple rectilinear building, but the consequences of that was the restroom needed to be removed. So we looked at, are there ways that we could achieve the same thing with an L or a U-shaped building that allowed us to keep the restroom?
Oh, I see.
Yes.
So.
And then we labeled them A, B, and C because of the increase of cost, so that you would see the least cost and then to the most cost. But we actually started here.
So what was the moving of the bathroom?
The moving of the bathroom was one of the cost increases, but remember that the primary difference between this, from a cost perspective, is the tsunami resistant foundation.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much.
So I did have a question. I know it was brought up about H trap not potentially being here in the, you know, in the facility, but maintaining here. Is that something you would like us to price, the difference between a smaller building that would not include H trap?
Let's, well, if I can just be, I would prefer that they stay with the rest, and also, this building is way too big for that operation, and so if we're going to do something with this facility, I would prefer that we have total flexibility to lease it or do the whatever with it, without saying that, you know, we're occupying this portion of it, or this portion plus. So I would, you know, we'll, we'll explore anything that you would like, but.
Well, I would think, let's assume we go with the RV park. If we've completed this building, gone, and that time, it might make sense to take a look at building H trap, through the beach, and, and something on this facility, decide to, another way, but that's down the road, not part of the story, because it's here.
And also, from the standpoint that we are talking about the concept here, if we get down the road and we're in development, and then we start talking about those things, we can price out the cost of, you know, putting H trap here and reducing the size of the building. I just am not comfortable with making operational decisions now, when, you know, we're just now saying, maybe the site plan, great location, and not to say that we'll separate out something or not. I think that keeping our options open for this site, without having to commit and say, well, H trap won't hit home unless we still have this building, I'd rather wait and have that discussion.
I think the whole discussion about this site is a totally different discussion. If we've decided that RV park is where we're going to go, then we start a discussion of what, okay, now what do we do with this site? If that includes portions of the RV, or the city hall, that comes after that, after. So, yeah, I would say let's hang on to that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just, I, I know we've already discussed it, but what is the rationale for continuing to keep the police department with the city hall if, if they were able to, to say, occupy this site? And I know, maybe that gets back to your, your same argument, as having H trap here all by itself.
Well, police would probably be the least likely to stay here.
Because of its location?
Because of the location, because of the elevation.
Yes.
They're the ones that the state's going to say, you have to be above this, you have to build to these standards. The rest of us are building to that standard, so that we'll still be there, you know, when the, even if the big one comes. So if, if anything, and I would not advocate this, but if you were going to do something or to leave the other places here, trying to save money, build a category two, and then build, you know, the, the police station and another location. But again, I wouldn't advocate that, but I think that they would need to be on the higher ground with a stronger building. That's actually what we'd be required to do that more often.
Okay.
Can I ask? If, I mean, I have not heard, none of us have heard from Rob, I mean, is there a consensus for that site that we want to have, you know, talk again for another meeting? Yes.
Well, I was going to just say that this was not known as for anything, like, making any kind of a decision in the consensus, you know? Folks, you're going to consent or make a decision like a vote, it's big enough that it's a vote?
No, but we wouldn't, we're not going to be voting on anything, we're talking about what we do next, and maybe to take it to a voting meeting to go ahead and get direction. But we won't, I don't know what we would take to the next meeting until we've heard from everybody, or to find out if there are any questions or concerns before we would make a decision like that. So next step, would we take it to a meeting where you folks provide direction and say, you know, it's this one, it's gal rest, or whatever, or let's go ahead and look at some more options? It's just whether or not we have a consensus or not. But if we do, then there's, there's nothing more than consensus, and then we go ahead and we take it for, for action.
My only concern is the people who live in the RV park and how they feel about it.
We talked to the, and we can ask, what's the, the company?
Oh, Escalology.
Yeah, Escalology. We can ask Escalology.
But they don't, they're not the residents who live in the area, which is what I'm talking about.
Oh, around the, I'm sorry, the residents, now, you said in the RV park. Yes, I'm sure that we will hear from them, but there's not a site in town, but we're not going to hear from people in the area, so we just, I, I assume that we will hear from them.
This will go to a public hearing anyway.
Oh, absolutely. You've got, you have a lot of steps that have to happen, and I, I'm not even sure, I'm, I'm not even outlining what we need to happen, because we now, in the middle of August or early August, we're going to have to get the referendum on the job.
I'm thinking that we need to have some time, the five of us, to sit on the fact that we might go with this one, and then perhaps have another work session where we can, if you've come up with any new concerns or new ideas and how to tweak it a little bit, or if there's something that comes up, and publish the heck out of it so that we can get some input maybe, or at least get more people aware of what we're talking about, and then take it to a voting meeting, to say that this is the one we're going to, or not going to advance towards more detailed drawings and concepts, so that we could then present it for the, the bond, or referendum. That make sense?
Is there anything that we can ask Bruce to give us, or Bruce and the staff to give us, to further that discussion a little?
Oh, one thing I would definitely like to see is a list of what it is that needs to be done to the property, including, you know, the zone change, and I, I guess, maybe to be a little too early to talk about, you know, what would happen around the construction of it, but it's all part of it, I suppose, in order to make a decision about it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
If I make a suggestion, why don't we just kind of cut here, and then Blad and I, um, to the meeting on the fourteenth, just bring any questions that might have, and we give us time with Blad and Nancy Oles, and then we'll come back to it at some point late May or early June, at which time, if the council is ready to make a decision, then as far as providing direction, not, you know, final decision, saying, yes, we want to go to Simmons. Another option is to direct staff to have a, a public meeting, a city hall meeting type of thing, and say, let's, we've done all this research, let's present all this information, and see what the responses are from people. And then, then finally, you, you make the decision. You can say that we favor this one, we don't say anything about, you know, like, do we favor or not? We can talk about how that would be presented. But I think that Brandon's right. The next step is, now that we have this conversation, is there anything else that you want to know? And, or any concerns you want to bring up and express, you know, in front of, you know, one another for discussion? And then we can kind of talk about what happens next, because I don't know how you have this discussion without starting the discussion about what happens here after. People don't want to know that. So, I think it's kind of a, we've got to say, we can say we don't know, but there's a lot of things that we need to sort out.
Okay.
One of the other, further studies, which is presented, soon this building is gone and enters its own parking.
Yes.
That's a base. That's certainly something that can be presented.
Yes.
And how many, 25 new parking spaces, there is some number.
Yeah, right, I forget.
But that's, certainly that's, I think, where you can start, but then in discussions, but there are other things that we're going to be able to do here. And do people have ideas?
And I think there's other options too. Some of the people are probably going to not be happy if I was to voice them, but we can have discussions about whether or not we want to try to sell the property. I wouldn't necessarily advocate it, but that's, that is a, a, something that we should be to say, yes, we're considering, or we would never do, so that we take it off the table or we put it on the table. So that we're trying to give some level of certainty to people about what is likely to happen if we were to leave this site. So, I think that there's a lot of discussion, you know, to come. And then, I, I said, don't count as a thought on how to take the suggestion and move forward. It would either be, we did the study, here it is, we made this decision, or we did the study, here, what do you think? And then followed by, okay, well, if you do that, oh, you know, what, what else might happen? So.
Well, it could look forward to the 11th, if we, if we don't talk to each other. Maybe the school can, I thought that was a possibility.
It's helpful.
And even though the site is in an area where it's not required to be tsunami-resistant, I'd like to know what the cost would be if it could be. Because I think if we're building something, we should build it correctly.
So, you're, you're saying the one-story tsunami-resistant?
Yes. I would like that too.
Yeah, we can do that.
But the other two options did have a tsunami-resistant.
Yes, but they, they also had the other costs associated with the two-story. But it, it would be closer to the two-story, but slightly less.
Yes, that's, that's why I assume.
But we can, we can be precise on what that would be.
Okay, so related, that, if the option that Robin just asked for, which is the tsunami-resistant one-story, and then we'll just have a placeholder on the 14th for you folks to ask questions or make suggestions or throw out other alternatives, and then decide where we go from there.
Somebody mentioned zoning challenge. How, how much of a challenge is it?
Yeah. We'll, we'll report.
And what would it, what would be the actual setbacks and those kinds of little infinite details that Jeff's good at?
Would you like, first of all, next to the really heavy meeting already, but we could provide that. What if we were to go ahead and try to answer your questions? So, you guys bring up the questions. And then we have another meeting, maybe the 22nd, which is a Wednesday, it's after the, we're done with budget. And then bring back, like the Jeff report, the answers to anything else that you might have, anything you bring up next Tuesday.
Should never said anything.
And try to go ahead and cover those as much as possible.
So, you're saying have a meeting after the budget meeting?
No.
No, this would be having on that, so that would be fine. And Brandon and I are laughing because Brandon just said, we don't have a meeting on the 22nd.
Yeah. I heard what you said, and that's.
And he adds a change.
Okay, so 14th, bring your questions, and then think about setting aside the 22nd. We won't commit to it now, but that might be the time we roll everything back together, not the public meeting, but we roll together and say, okay, what are we going to do?
And would the public be noticed for that?
Oh, sure. Well, they, we can, we can do more notice than we normally do for a meeting.
You should.
But it's, it's not the decision-making meeting that we're talking about saying, this, we've got all our answers, this is what we're proposing, we look at everything. That's not what we'd be on the 22nd. The 22nd is to try to finish up your questions and for you to decide how you want to proceed. But if you want, we can do a separate advertisement for that, to say that, you know, we're getting close to the end of the discussion and.
Our community comes up with great ideas sometimes.
So, did, did you answer on, do you want special advertising?
I don't think we need it for the 14th.
No, 22nd.
For the 22nd, but we're not deciding on the 22nd until the 14th.
Yep.
So, let's, you know, let's see what the questions are on the 14th. If they are elaborate and we need the 22nd, if they're not, then we can then decide where we're going from there.
At any time, I'll ask Jeff to write the report and just send it to you so you get your questions answered.
Yeah, and it's, right now, all I see is zoning and setbacks. I don't see a dramatic, you know, site analysis kind of thing. Everybody knows it's flat and kind of.
Actually, what you can see there is worst-case scenario from a setback standpoint. Depending on the zoning, we could go to 15 feet instead of 25. So, this is as tight as it can get.
Yeah.
I would think, just in response to Robin's questions about the neighbors, that the more buffer that you could provide between the neighborhood and the, the built structure, the better.
No, absolutely. And we, with consideration for the sidewalk down in Hasbro, we said, no, there's no reason, there's nobody going to go down there, give you more buffer. And same thing all the way around. So, no, if, if we can go one-story, I don't think it's going to be very intrusive at all within the neighborhood. And you're here all day, a bunch of people get here to eat, and then people drift in and out, but it's not fresh, it's not fresh market, or fresh foods or whatever it is.
Farmers market?
Farmers mar, no, 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 that's not. It's not like we have council churn here. It's a couple, maybe five, 10 people a day or something like that, and I come in to pay their, you know, the fines for it. So, it's, other than the meeting night, it's not, you do the, you know, and they are.
Can I get in a really big trouble?
Sure.
We could put a food truck up there and everybody would be happy.
The other question is, how, would that, I mean, we have a real problem getting parking in the summer here to come into City Hall. I wonder if we're going to have a situation like that with all this parking available? People can walk then down to, you know, downtown like they do now from that area? So, I guess, you know.
This would be just, this would be just for City Hall. Yeah, I mean, if somebody parked there, they could walk down. I don't know if anybody would know to do that, and that's pretty good, as possible.
Interesting question. Think about that one. Okay, that's on the 14th, well, worry about that. Okay, everybody good?
Yep.
Our adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.